All right, and is that Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, sir, it is.
Perfect. Thank you for attending. Sorry to hear about the situation you got going on, but our thoughts are certainly with you, sir. So we do appreciate you dialing in. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
And any opposed that carries unanimously? Thanks, sir. Next up, we've got a proclamation for Girl Scouts Week. And whereas March 12th marks the 112th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA founded by Juliette Daisy Gordon Low in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia, and whereas throughout its distinguished history, Girl scouting has inspired millions. That's perfect timing. Hey, here, I tell you what, you can come right on up here and stand right beside me, okay? I had just read the persons. All right, so whereas through Girl scouting, girls gain knowledge and develop skills that will sustain them a lifetime, making themselves, their community, and the world a better place. And whereas, Girl scouting takes an active role in increasing girls' awareness of the countless opportunities available to them today in science, technology, engineering, mathematics, fine and performing arts, and other fields that can expand their horizons. And whereas, girls join scouting from all walks of life and are connected across various geographic locations. By focusing on community, Girl Scouts is an instrument of change promoting optimism and producing positive outcomes for all. More than 2.5 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating 112 years of this American tradition with nearly 60 million women who were former Girl Scouts and living proof of the impact of this amazing movement. Bein' resolved, I Fonzie Flowers by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the town of Youngsville, North Carolina, do hereby applaud the commitment Girl scouting has made to support the life and leadership development of girls and proudly proclaim the week of March 10th through 16th, 2024 as Girl Scout Week. In witness hereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the seal of North Carolina to be affixed this 14th day of March 2024. Do you know how to shake and take? Shake and take, shake, shake my hand like that, perfect, and then I'm gonna give you this, okay? Can we hold it open for the camera? You hold it up like that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Scared. Not at all. I like. Oh, she's coming back. Are you gonna sell me, are you gonna sell me some cookies?
You see, it doesn't sound like.
Cookie says. Well, that stinks. Did you wanna sit up here with us, or did you wanna sit with your mom, or what'd you wanna do? We'll make you an honorary commissioner tonight. All right, the second proclamation that I have is in honor and memory of Safety Officer Louis Dunston. Whereas September 17th, 2024 will mark the 45th anniversary of Louis Dunston's watch for the Youngsville Fire Department. And whereas, Officer Dunston was a mentor to generations of firefighters, answering and responding to emergency calls to save lives while ensuring staff training and equipment kept them safe. And whereas, Officer Dunston served in the North Carolina National Guard for over 20 years protecting the residents of our great state. And whereas, Officer Dunston built many lasting relationships in the community through the Fire Department, his service at Tony A's Hardware, and with the National Guard. And whereas, Officer Dunston's life was one of a community servant. Bein' resolved, I Fonzie A. Flowers by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the town of Youngsville, North Carolina, do hereby celebrate the dedication of Safety Officer Louis Dunston by proclaiming September 17th, 2024 as the Safety Officer Louis Dunston Day. In witness hereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the seal of North Carolina to be affixed this 14th day of March 2024. You can see him come up, cam.
Something you said.
You.
You're making this sound real good, but if I'm at that table, we need all help.
We needed some more hair in this region.
But I just, I want right now, that's one that's more in the, we found. Don't be sorry, campus.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, and next up, we have a presentation, Officer Drew Cox, Unmanned Aerial Vehicles.
How you doing today? I'm Officer Drew Cox, your newest officer in the town of Youngsville. I'm happy to be presenting this for you today. Commissioner, Mayor, Deputy Town Clerk, thanks so much. Mr. Page as well for being here. This is an opportunity for the town, I believe, to look into a great technology that's available to law enforcement and that law enforcement agencies in our area are employing to, as a force multiplier, especially in a town like Youngsville where we have a very select few amount of officers. So today, we're gonna cover some topics, the history and prolongation of unmanned aircraft systems, ways to deploy unmanned aerial systems in support of law enforcement operations. If you hear me say drones, I'm referring to UAS. UAS is a fancy term. Training requirements and operational legal concerns and employing drone as law enforcement agency. We're gonna have popular models and performance capabilities of the systems that are on the market now and projected cost as well. So I'm a history guy. I can't, I can't start off something without giving you a little bit of background on where things started. Here we have a depiction of a very early balloon flight in France, but that was the first manned balloon flight happened in France in 1783. The first use of them as being, you know, as a, what would we call, like an observation platform would have been in 1794, not too long after that. The Union Army used a, had a balloon corps that was formed in 1861, and they used throughout the war. There was also a Confederate attempt at a balloon unit. Milestones in aviation, we are the first supplied state. We have the Wright Brothers, their first powered flight occurred in 1909. Radio controlled aircraft were actually developed in World War I when radio was first coming to the forefront. Artillery observation aircraft served in both World War I and World War II. There's a lot of advancements in technology coming along. And that kind of culminated for me in this researching, there was a unmanned aerial vehicle which you see in the bottom right here. It's an early drone that was employed by Battleship USS Wisconsin during Operation Desert Storm in order to, as an artillery observation platform. And there were Iraqi soldiers surrendering to the drone because it was so effective. Unmanned aerial systems continue to shape the scope of observation and warfare in numerous current conflicts around the globe. All you gotta do is turn on whichever news choi- news channel that you prefer, and you're gonna see a conflict that has drones employed en masse. Law enforcement has been utilizing drones at least since 2005. Customs and Border Patrol ended up getting some Predator drones from the US military and employing them for their uses. The first civilian police department documented case that we have is they were using one of those CBP drones in accordance with the Customs and Border Patrol. That happened in Georgia in 2005. And once again, Predators were in use during an arrest in 2011 in North Dakota. So law enforcement drone usage begins to accelerate in 2016 with the release of the consumer grade DJI Phantom 4 drone, one of which you see right here in front of you. And this is a gift from my dad. When I told him that I was getting interested in drones, he had this, and he has a small airstrip in Indiana that he owns. And he got his drone to kind of mess around with the, you know, around the airstrip. But what you see here, this is 2016 technology, but I wanted you to see it so that you see a little bit of form factor. You have a radio control unit usually with some sort of display and the unit itself, all right? And you can see everything will fit into a compact package that's easily deployable from a patrol vehicle. So one of the reports that I could find for research purposes was Center of Study in the Drone, which is funny, we have a center for that now, but, and that's at Bard College in New York. If you click on the link, if you go to this PowerPoint, the link will lead you directly to the PDF. And there's some different information on there. As of 2020, there were 1,578 local, state, and county law enforcement agencies and emergency services organizations that would include fire departments across the US who employ unmanned aerial systems. Seventy percent of those were for law enforcement. Forty-three are known agencies in North Carolina. And then the majority of the drones are operated or consumer or prosumer grade system, was prosumer being kind of a step between a NASA grade, you know, amazing drone and what you see in front of you in a DJI consumer. The median cost of supplying an unmanned aerial system program was about $12,000. That was in 2020, and we all know what keeps that in inflation. But we're, you'll see a little bit, I have some sample, some sample costs later on. Drone Fire Department, Asheville Police Department, Kinston Police Department, Fayetteville State Department, I'm sorry, Fayetteville Police Department, State Highway Patrol, and Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. Also, I was talking with Chief Patrice Andrews in Durham, and the city of Durham is also employing drones and has a program already in place. The types of, what can we do with a drone as law enforcement officers? That's, you know, kind of public concern and also what capabilities does get? So as far as our public safety missions, we can do search and rescue, inclement weather, tornadoes, hurricanes, hurricane damage. We can, we can get a drone up in the air and assess damage, find out where we need resources and put in there. Hazmat incidents, we have a train, train system or train tracks that run through the town. There's often hazmat associated with those trains and also bomb threat evaluations. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a little bit. Crashing crime scene mapping, there are agencies, and I believe Patrice Andrews over in Durham is also doing this, but she is using the drones with her traffic unit. When they have a critical traffic crash where there is, you know, major injury or death, they can send the drone up in the air and use photogrammetry to photo the entire scene and get measure, you get very accurate measurements on the spot quickly and get the scene cleaned up and open to traffic again. Another great use form is just monitoring large crowds. If you're having a festival downtown or at Luddy Park or any of those, those things, you can use, you can use a drone to monitor traffic and identify any problem areas. Also, PR and media, there's the, the camera systems and the abilities of a drone to take all these really cool fancy shots or, you know, supplement what you already have in place for your PR abilities. It's really cool to see what a, what a drone can do. I was gonna talk about the enforcement options as well. They can provide tactical overwatch. We can do building searches if there's a break-in or hostage scenario, barricaded suspect, and for search warrants. We'll talk about that here in a second as well. Here's some incidents that I went back and thought of, what, what's happened in Youngsville where we could have used a drone that would have helped us? And so on June 27th, 2023, you might have remembered, there was a bomb threat at the food line. Well, that bomb threat call ended up being a two and a half hour spree of us being on scene and assessing. I believe that there was a robot drone, like a tracked vehicle that went into the store and eventually cleared it. But it took two and a half hours to do so. On August 27th, an attempted apprehension of a wanted suspect, felony warrants, attempted murder. Could have used that to, for overwatch in order to kind of contain the suspect. And unfortunately, he ran away. On November, or excuse me, October 9th, there was a hit and run at East Main and Cross Street. We all know the intersection, and traffic does back up considerably whenever either that one or College and Main get backed up. So we could use that to just kind of redirect traffic and figure out where all the traffic, where we could direct our resources to get traffic flowing properly. December 2nd, on the Christmas parade, could always use it for overwatch and traffic monitoring as well. As far as your FAA compliance, what does the FAA say you need to have to operate a drone? Part 107 certification is required for any commercial drone operation. There are some caveats in that. You can't fly at night over crowds, beyond visual line of sight, and the training cost between $70 and $500 depending on where you go. It's pretty entry level certification. That gets you in the door and that gets you working. And from there, you can get work towards a part 91, which would give you greater abilities. You can fly in what's called IFR conditions, instrument flight rating. So you could fly outside the line of sight, you could fly over big crowds, beyond 400 feet above ground level if you need to, those sorts of things. Once again, the links, if you wanna reference and see what the requirements are, the links work inside the PowerPoint. DOT also requires that you have a part 107 standard, you are able to do the system operator's knowledge test for the DOT. So some of the local training options, several community colleges offer part 107. Central Piedmont Community College, I know that's a bit ways away, but it does offer law enforcement specific unmanned aerial systems classes that would teach an operator all the different legal ramifications, legal, you know, things we have to worry about, and also specific training to do those, those missions that we need to do as law enforcement. Totalfly is another option as well. All operations of the system would be expressly prescribed in a departmental general order that had the rules and regulations in place. There is a sample on the bottom there. If you wanna see, Concord, North Carolina has a good general order for their unmanned aerial systems program. Ideally, we would like to see no less than two operators who are being maintained in the department to ensure one is available at any time. The equipment that we'd like to see would be equipment that ideally consists of one large general purpose drone with thermal imaging capability, some weather resistance rating, high flight time endurance, and then one smaller tag more tactical drone suitable for indoor flight and tactical intervention scenarios. All right, approved uses, we've already talked about those. You saw that. So some of the legal concerns, the biggest glaring, most glaring thing that the public has, what, you know, what is this drone gonna be used for? And on my Fourth Amendment rights, you have Fourth Amendment rights, you have rights on unreasonable search seizure, right? Here at the Youngsville Police Department, we uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States, right? There is some case law out there that, that says that you have an expectation of privacy for the most part, but public airspace is limited as far as what, what an enforcement agency can and can't do from the air. So as far as the North Carolina general statutes are concerned, there are law enforcement exceptions when there has been a search warrant issued by a judge says there's probable cause to believe that there's evidence of a crime here, then a search warrant is issued and a drone, drone use is accepted. Exigent circumstances, if there is an armed suspect, you know, in a scenario like that, exigency would dictate, we need to use this drone now to stop the threat. Plain view doctrine, if we're just having a regular flight, maybe we're doing a traffic monitoring flight and we see some, we see blatant evidence of a crime, we can use the drone, drone to further that investigation. Public gatherings are, are good to go with drone usage and emergency management disaster type scenarios. Storage and dissemination of the video and photos, that's something we're gonna have to develop and make sure we have a bona fide system in place so that we can retain that as evidence. Is imperative that the public is well informed of the mission, the basic capabilities, the guidelines, and the parameters of any drone system in use by the police department. They must know that our oath to support and defend the US Constitution, especially the Fourth Amendment, will never be compromised. They must know how drones can greatly supplement and enhance the police department's mission to and service to the community. All right, with all that being said, I'm gonna go through some of the models. There's Autel, Brink has an excellent indoor drone, DJI as well, and Skydio. The DJI Matrice 300, this is what I would call a Cadillac. It has weather resistant capabilities, IP55 rated, and we all know the pollen is coming. We can fly in heavy pollen and also smoke, rain, all those sorts of things. As far as a, an ISR drone for search and recovery using a thermal imaging, this would be an excellent drone, two half, has 9.3 miles, max range would get go point to point in any part of the town. It's got almost an hour of maximum flight time on one battery, and you could hot swap the batteries. So you can land it, keep one battery in, hot swap in a new one, and send it back up. You have hardly any downtime. An odd we'll mention on here, this is the Matrice 30T, which is a kind of a smaller version of this, but it's still also got a lot of the capabilities. Mavic 3 Thermal, you could go out and just about any major electronics retailer and get a Mavic 3 Thermal drone. Performance ability is gonna be fantastic. However, it is only somewhat water resistant, doesn't have that, that weather, IP55 weather rating. But there are some cool things about it. You have modular attachments, you can use spotlight or loudspeaker. Those things can come in very handy for police departments to use, especially loudspeaker if you need to challenge somebody from a distance. Or, you know, speak back. Skydio X10 is a flying supercomputer, so they say. It's got a ridiculous amount of computing power. It does have the IP55 rating. What's really cool about it is it can map in real time if you're going, let's say, into a large industrial building and you're trying to do a building search. You can actually map the floor plan inside of where you're flying and get a 3D rendering as you're flying through it of where everything is. Fantastic drone. Unlimited range. Another great thing about this is, let's say I'm at the beach with my family, because it's my, you know, it's my weekend off. There's a capability with this drone. Let's say Captain Muncie calls me up and says, hey, I need a drone up in the air right now. I can say, okay, I've got my Apple on my phone, you know, power up the drone. I can fly it from here and talk to him in real time and fly the drone from, from the beach in Youngsville and be able to, to do what we have to do to finish, finish the job. The Brain Glamer 2 is this tactical drone. Drone Police Department has it in place with its set team. It is specifically designed as a first responder drone. It has a glass breaking feature. So then we, if we wanted to fly through this window right here, we could set it up, it'll break the glass, and we could fly through it. So it is made, is made specifically for tactical scenarios, mostly indoor. It does have IP24 rating against rain and wet conditions, which is good. It's also very impact resistant. And it also has talk back feature where you can call the drone basically from any phone and talk and speak and get, get real time information back. If there's, for instance, a barricaded subject inside the building, we send the drone in, and we can challenge him, talk to him, have a negotiation through the drone itself. Pretty cool. DJI Aveda drone, this is a very low cost drone. These are being employed right now in the Middle East as we speak. And they are great for room clearing and tactical intervention scenarios. We need to fly indoors. It's seen here with a light attachment that we'd have to purchase separately, but just so we can see in the dark anytime we go in. It is also impact resistant. It has a flip over feature. If you accidentally fly it into a wall or into something you don't see and it falls on its back, you actually flip it back over and continue for. There is a demo video for each of these drones. I highly encourage, if you got some extra time tonight, go and click on the video and you'll see all the cool features for each drone. So some sample procurements of what this would look like. I mean, ideally, the Cadillac, DJI Matrice 300, and a Brain Glamer drone, you know, you're looking at the approximately cost of $33,000 for the hardware itself to get an amazing drone program started. The DJI Matrice 30 that I mentioned before is kind of like the baby brother to the big Matrice and the Brain Glamer. That brings the cost down a little bit, but still keeps capabilities besides maybe just a little bit of flight time. You're looking at $22.5 approximately hardware cost for that. The Skydio X10, we use that as our ISR drone because it does have infrared capabilities and is IP55 rated, and you have the added benefit of being able to fly it from just about anywhere in the world. And then the Aveda as a, as a small tactical drone, that sample procurement looks at, looks about 15.9. DJI Mavic 3 Thermal and the DJI Aveda, $900, $7,400, still lots of capability. We don't have the weather, the weather rating there. We still have thermal, we still have the small, small drone for interior use. Conclusion, I know we all been waiting for this, I have. All right. Thank you guys for holding in there with me. I noticed a lot of information coming at you all. So thank you. Through this presentation, I hope that you have seen how unmanned aircraft systems can support and enhance the police department's mission through innovative technology and expansive capabilities. You've seen how other agencies in the area are employing them by augmenting their force and serving their community. I hope that you will thoughtfully consider how unmanned aerial systems can be put to be used to serve citizens of Youngsville. Thanks for your time, and we'll close on the video. This will be the Morseville Police Department's drone demonstration. Thanks for your time. Thank you for your time and we'll close on video. This will be the Morseville Police Department's drone demonstration. Thanks for your time.
We got a drama coming, bro. Inception.
He got, he got him. Oh, he's gonna get him. With that, I'll make myself bill for any questions that the council might have.
Thank you. That was super informative, honestly.
Thank you much.
Yeah, I um.
None of that.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it definitely sounds like it's got a ton of uses um with that and I can think of an instance and. I don't know that many people in this room were here, but we had a low speed, high speed chase. That happened several years ago where the individual ended up. Crashing down cross. I don't know if you remember that or not. And they got out of the vehicle and took off. So if that, something like that would have been helpful to that exact. Scenario of being able to put it up in the air and and tracking and monitoring it. So, yeah.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. With infrared, if it was day or night, uh no no matter where you're hiding in the woods, we'd be able to see you. Um, so apprehending that suspect would be our priority and we fall under under exigency to be able to. Be able to apprehend that suspect. And with it being, you know, presumably in the back of a patrol car with an operator ready to use it, it would be a matter of a few minutes. To get it up in the air.
I think it's outstanding. Um, just to to commend. The the staff, you guys are always looking ahead and being proactive instead of reactive and kudos to to you guys for. For looking through this because I mean, technology is only going to get better and better and um keeping people safe, obviously. Huge priority for us, so.
Yes, sir. And I just wanted to thank you for the the kind gesture you showed in Fire Department today, honoring men um who served aside. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Did anyone want to see the drone?
I was like.
Are you gonna fly a rattle here?
Thank you so much. Uh, there are no public hearings uh for tonight, so uh the next thing is citizens' comments. Did we have anyone to sign up for citizens' comments? Do we have anyone in attendance who would like to make a citizen's comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move along into item eight, which is the consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion.
We'll take a moment.
Second. All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? That's unanimous. I bet Joe's still on mute. Uh, there is no old business. So we'll move along into new business, which is item A, uh the Faith Baptist Shared Use Agreement. Uh, we've already discussed this at length and and we certainly cherish the relationship that we have with with Faith Baptist and. You guys being on the ready to help with the town um at every turn. So um the action request here is to approve the shared use agreement as presented.
Motion to approve, second.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote?
Just thank you for all your best, you know, it's it's a lot.
Love us.
Set away.
All right, any additional discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that motion is unanimous as well. That vote is unanimous. Um, reports and other business, I don't have a ton. Obviously, um, we were certainly saddened uh for the loss of Lewis Dunston. Um, I was honored to be asked to to speak. Um, at the funeral, um, a man of such character and grace and just humility and. Um, it's, I know it's certainly gonna leave a void and um, yeah, very emotional day, but um. You guys did a very good job of honoring his memory, so um. The other thing, I mean, we got the five K coming up. I'm looking forward to. Jogging for those who use that reference. Um, I think it's gonna be a hybrid jog a little bit, walk a lot. Um, but yeah. I'm looking forward to it. I think it's gonna be a tremendous day and bringing people into town and. Um. Congratulations to the all star basketball teams. Uh, we weren't as successful as we would have liked to have been. Um, but I wanna commend all the kiddos that made the all stars representing the town and with that, it's kind of it for me. Turn it over to.
Yeah, I'm just excited about the five K on Saturday. Yay, it's uh, we have over a hundred people registered. Um. And you can still register day of if you really wanna run three point one miles. Uh, and the weather is supposed to be great and the medals look good, the t-shirts are great. And everybody gets a free beverage just for registering. Yeah, pub has green beer all day and live music. I'm hoping it's just like a really festive thing and we can make this a a tradition. I'm excited about it. I'll be there. So there's that. That's all I have.
That's worth the price of a biscuit. Uh, Commissioner Percy?
Uh, next Wednesday, uh Home Slice is hosting the Chamber of Commerce from four to six for the monthly mingle.
Colorado. I think it's Tuesday. Did I put out the wrong date?
They put the wrong date on. Yeah, I reached out. I was like, hey, you put the wrong date on Facebook. It's the twentieth um from four to six. Uh, you guys are welcome to come. Anybody's welcome to come. You can meet. A ton of local business owners and. Uh, a lot of people from the community will be there. It's normally a pretty good turnout when you. Have pizza and drinks and tell people to come hang out for a couple of days, a couple hours in nice weather. Um, the other thing, I like the. I like the UAS stuff, chief. Um. I've seen it used in two different ways. I've seen it used for tracking deer. After a bad shot and it is.
It is a way to wait a minute now and we get to. Okay, that's making more sense.
It is amazing how hours at like hours and hours afterwards that with that infrared that it can still locate that minor little heat signature. In in dense cover. And then my dad actually has certification for it for work. Um, they use it to find leaks. He's a, he was a roofer for the county. And you can actually use the flare to go over a roof and see a cold spot and that cold spot's the AC leaving the building through a leak. Instead of over and over again showing up and trying to figure out, we've got water on this ceiling tile, but the leak's actually coming down here, running down this pipe coming. So I mean, do how fast, like you were saying, a force multiplier, how fast it can. Cut that cost of what it costs to actually. It is rather impressive. That's all I got.
That's pretty nifty. Thank you for that. Uh, Commissioner Brain?
I'd much rather be at Home Slice next day, but we have a Campo meeting, so I'll be I'll be there. Uh, speaking of Campo, this morning we had a, make sure I get it right here, blueprint for safety kickoff and stakeholder workshop, so. Um, Campo's working on an inaugural certification safety plan for the entire Campo region. And we were invited to participate today, so from our region of Franklin County was myself and then Scott Habibacher from uh the county. It was a good opportunity for us to uh meet um other people in the region. I mean, this was DOT folks, City of Raleigh. Uh, staff, engineers, uh federal highway and Campo staff. And I had the opportunity to get up in front of the entire group and talk about. The issues we're having with the heavy truck truck traffic downtown and specifically talk about the safety issues it causes for our pedestrians and that's something that. We have a a vision for is to have a a pedestrian friendly downtown and I even added on that if we were to have. An emergency situation and we've got Main Street gummed up with tractor trailers and dump trucks, it prevents our emergency vehicles from being able to get. To the scene, so um it was a good opportunity to share that and I'm looking forward to seeing where this goes and hopefully being able to. Utilize it to uh, you know, tailor our ongoing projects and and projects down the road to. Fit the the safety measures that'll help it score higher. Uh, so I'm I'm hoping that's gonna be a component of this is that. It it's a metric uh for our projects in the future, so um it was good kickoff meeting and we'll see where it goes.
Thank you for doing that. That is tremendous.
Welcome.
I think that'll make a big difference in the future.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Um, and then I'll add just a little on the drones. Uh, I work in the the power industry and and we use it heavily. Uh, Wake Electric uses it to fly their lines. Uh, we use it in our nuclear facilities. Uh, we've got it in a big cage and you can send it in there so you don't have to send employees into contaminated areas, so. Uh, has a lot of uses. I think it's only gonna get better because um there's a a need for it and a a lot of uh demand for it out there, so. Um, I'm excited to to see us be able to utilize it to uh make us more efficient and keep us safer. Our citizens and staff. That's all.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Johnson, you still with us?
Said that the phone line died, but he's been trying to call back in.
Okay, no worries. Um, I'll turn it over to our honorable commissioner tonight. Do you have anything that you wanted to add? You don't have to. All right, good to go. All right. Um, Ms. Katie Barbara Jones, our town attorney.
Glad to get the Faith Baptist Shared Use Agreement in front of y'all and and get that and. As a former Girl Scout, thank you for the proclamation today. It's an honor to join you. And I hope everyone has a successful event this weekend. That's exciting.
I like it. And finally, uh, staff?
Mayor, I have the honor of presenting you with a proposed budget for next year.
All right.
Um, this is hot off the presses. I printed it today. Um, and.
You're welcome.
We will discuss it during the next month meeting. Um, but it. Uh, to me, all of the ideas that we came up with, discussed and addressed during budget workshop. Six days ago. The only other item that I had was that um for those who are less interested in a run and more ice skating candy, there is an Easter egg hunt on. Saturday, the twenty third.
Yeah.
That is happening at Bloody Park. And the playground opened today.
Soft opening for the playground today and at our next meeting, we'll get a photo op prior to coming over here. Okay. All right. Um, Ms. Robby, did you have anything?
Yes, I do, yes, ma'am. I want to thank Star for coming out tonight to represent the uh Girl Scouts of Youngsville. And I want to thank the board for allowing uh the continued tradition that we've started in reference to uh honoring the Girl Scouts during Girl Scout Week. Um, I was a Girl Scout for thirty years and um I'm glad that you guys have agreed to continue the tradition.
Absolutely. Good deal. Happy uh happy to oblige, so. Um, having said that, uh, no need to go into closed session. Um, so. We're at most of our favorite time of the meeting um to adjourn, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
We should adjourn.
Thank you.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? Uh, and no one has opposed. Meeting is adjourned as of seven fifty two.